Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 30, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. O’Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Barton.
Present.
President Fox.
Here. Okay, and now moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Since tonight the police are being recognized, I’d like to have the members of the Police Department lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could we have, please have the notes, notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
Yes. A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we’re moving on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see lots of people here. As a reminder, I hold office hours every week on Mondays from 10:00 to noon and on Wednesdays from 10:30 to 12:30. No appointment is needed. If you would like to speak with me but cannot stop by my office during that time, please email me at nradist@cityofsummit.org, and we can arrange another time or a phone call. My next meet the mayor event is on Maple Street on Saturday, May 14, from 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. Please stop by to share with me your, just to say hello, but to share with me any questions or comments or concerns you may have. The Summit Police Trading Card Program is continuing through May 31. Each week, several new cards are featured. Children may ask any officer they meet for a card if they are not helping another person, or children may stop by the police records window at City Hall. As mayor, I also have a trading card and look forward to giving them out, so please ask me when you see me around town. More information about the Trading Card Program is available at cityofsummitpolice.org/polic. Earlier today, Union County installed a much-needed traffic signal on River Road at the intersection of Chatham Road near the Broadway Diner. This will surely help with traffic flow and safety. We have been asking for this for about five years. I expect it will be activated in the next few weeks. So, thank you, and I hope everybody had a lovely weekend.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now moving on to the City Administrator, Michael Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just two items. The deadline to renew dog and cat licenses for the next license year is May 31 this year. Registration notices have been sent to all owners of licensed dogs and cats. The license year begins on June 1, 2022. Renewals received after the May 31 deadline will incur a fee of $10. There is no late fee for first-time registration. More information is available on the city website, cityofsummit.org. And the last item, the annual budget snapshot summary, is being mailed tomorrow to every property owner in Summit. It contains the highlights of the 2022 introduced budget that will be considered for a public hearing at the Tuesday, May 3, Council meeting. Please keep an eye out for the budget flyer that will be in your mailbox soon. Once it’s in the U.S. Postal Office hands, there’s no telling when you will get it, but hopefully it will be within the next week. And that’s all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one item, which is the last day to register to vote in the June primary election is Tuesday, May 17. Clerk’s office will be open until 9:00 p.m. on May 17 for voter registration. Registration forms must be returned by mail or in person to the Union County Board of Election or the Summit Clerk’s Office by May 17. Forms are available in English and Spanish online or at the Clerk’s office. Also, the deadline to change party affiliation is Wednesday, April 13, to vote in the June primary election. And with that, we’re moving on to, let’s see, presentations. We have two presentations tonight. Our first one is the Police Department Accreditation, and we have with us tonight Harry Delgado, who’s the Accreditation Program Director from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, and we welcome him. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I’m here tonight on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the Law Enforcement Commission of the State of New Jersey to recognize your police department as one of the best police departments in the state, perhaps, arguably, in the nation. But I do bring proof. So, the Summit Police Department was recently accredited by the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that have made this commitment to excellence in policing. So, if you indulge me for, and I promise to be less than three minutes, I’d like to share with you the significance of the achievement. So accreditation, the Summit Police Department has made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level in a highly regarded statewide law enforcement accreditation program. This program administered to the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission has helped to transparently demonstrate the professionalism and preparedness of state’s law enforcement agencies. The New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Accreditation Program is purposefully designed to enhance the professionalism and transparency in the state’s public safety system. During these uniquely times, I think we would agree, and the threat to our health and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies to follow standardized practices and policies is a potentially life-saving and cost-effective investment on time and resources. In the State of New Jersey, I should mention, there’s 112 standards, many of which require multiple documents as proof of compliance. So accreditation gives an agency a preparedness plan and verification of excellence. Accreditation status represents a significant professional achievement recognized statewide and at the national level. Accreditation is a process, and the foundation of accreditation lies in the adoption of standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. Accreditation is a progressive and time-proven way of helping law enforcement agencies calculate and improve their overall performances. It is a certification by an independent authority, in this case, the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, that the accredited agency was carefully measured against an established set of state and national standards and has met, in the case of the Summit Police Department in many instances, I’m proud to say, exceeded accepted practices in the field of law enforcement. Research shows that accredited agencies have 11% fewer police professional liability claims, 18% fewer worker compensation claims, and 31 fewer auto liability claims. This statistic comes directly from the male groups. And moreover, municipalities that participate in a male-affiliated joint insurance fund, a JIF, stand to receive substantial insurance premium discounts when their police department attains accreditation. But in addition to these fiscal advantages, there are other benefits of accreditation. So accredited agencies are better able to defend against lawsuits and citizen complaints. Accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency’s commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials can be more confident in the agency’s ability to operate efficiently and meet community needs. And accreditation bodies that are very important precept of community-oriented policing. For many, for many years, we thought, as law enforcement officers, that we knew what the community wanted until we asked them. And so community-oriented policing creates a forum in which police and citizens work together to prevent and control challenges confronting law enforcement and provide clear direction about community expectation. And officers in accredited agencies, as I see some here tonight, can take pride that they have been objectively recognized for their professionalism and adherence to the highest standards. Now, I want to finish by sharing with you how the process works. After, the process in which an agency has to go through a self-assessment process, and at the end of their self-assessment process, we come in and we literally have to, they have to show actual tangible proof for each and every one of those 112 standards. And so out of that experience, a report is generated that first comes to me. I’d like just to paraphrase some of the things that the, just a couple of things that the assessment site mentioned about the Summit Police Department. The Summit Police Department has revised and introduced over 60 new standard operating procedures to ensure that they are following up to date Attorney General directives, guidelines, prosecutor directives and guidelines, and with law enforcement-backed policy and procedures. This process has brought the department to a level of professionalism that citizens have grown to expect. Under the leadership of Acting Chief Zagorski, moving forward is going to be a priority to review each of those policies to remove any unnecessary outdated information and update areas that need modification. The Summit Police Department has always held on a high standard that successful modern policing is a reflection of good training and community outreach. These elements actually achieved through the accreditation process. So, and it is the opinion of the assessment team that the Summit Police Department is a highly professional and committed agency which exemplify all of the tenants of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. I’d be remiss if I didn’t mention some people that were critical in making this a success. Retired chief now, Andrew Bartolotti, Bartolotti, I apologize, chief. Thank you. I got close tonight. And so, I mean, it was his idea, I mean, and he gave, you know, birth to the, or initiated the process for accreditation. Also, I’d like to mention Sergeant Christopher Medina and Chief Administrative Assistant Nicole Griffith, that were instrumental in assisting both Acting Chief Zagorski and Accreditation Manager Captain Ryan Peters. So therefore, it is indeed my honor tonight, on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission, to congratulate those that I’ve already mentioned, Acting Chief Stephen Zagorski, Accreditation Manager Captain Ryan Peters, the members of the Summit Police Department, the mayor, the council, council president, the rest of the council, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for achieving state accreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that have made this important commitment to excellence in policing. So to all, indeed, go congratulations. [applause] If I may, Council President, Madam Mayor, I’d like to call both the chief and Captain Peters here to present them with the certificate of accreditation.
Absolutely. We appreciate you coming, and congratulations to our police department for all the hard work that they put in on this project. I know it’s been a lot of work and a lot of time in doing this. So with that, we’ll move on to our second presentation of the evening. We have three gentlemen from the Summit Lacrosse Club, Chris Badgley, Bob Moriarty, and Leo Patis, who are going to talk to us about the Summit Lacrosse 50th Committee. Good evening.
I’m Bob Moriarty, here on behalf of, slight correction, the Summit Lacrosse Club 50th Anniversary Planning Committee.
Okay.
So the Summit Lacrosse Club was founded in 1972 by a small group of Summit parents, not unlike our small group that 50 years later is planning to not only celebrate the five decades of Summit Lacrosse, but more importantly, and more importantly for this evening, seeking council approval for the construction of a lacrosse wall at Tatlock Park. The construction costs of which the planning committee and alumni and friends of Summit Lacrosse will be raising all of the construction dollars, funds for beginning, hopefully upon approval by this body. So the 50th Anniversary Weekend will be June 24 and 5. There are several activities planned. The main event will be a celebration at the Arboretum, and we’ve got, as you might imagine, folks coming in from all over the country. And it will be multi-generation as well, and I think that, you know, the three of us are examples of three Summit Lacrosse players from the 1970s and early 80s. And we all have sons and daughters who have benefited from the support of the community and the lacrosse club. And so this is really a, we see it as a benefit for the community, but also a way for us to, the club and all the players, to give back, and we think it’s only appropriate because Summit really is the beacon of, you know, lacrosse in the state, and we want to, again, ensure that that continues in the future, but also say thank you for five decades and prepare the way for five, five more decades. The detail of the wall and the construction is not my area of expertise, which is why we brought with us Chris Meyer, classes 77, also a lacrosse parent, who has generously offered to construct the wall at cost. And so, and we also, I assume the board understands, and this, the impetus for this came when we had preliminary meetings and it came to our attention, was brought to our attention that as part of the Tatlock redevelopment plan a few years ago, this lacrosse wall was part of that, and we felt it was something that was achievable. And given the anniversary, there would be an impetus to raise the funds. We’re confident we’re going to raise, we will raise the funds. So we’re asking for council approval. We do not have expertise in how this all works behind the scenes, so we’re here to ask that of you, but you have our word and you have our guarantee, actually, that we will raise every penny for the construction.
Thank you.
Leo, is there anything additional?
And you’ve got, you’re working with Mark Azarovsky, who knows this process very well and will do an excellent job guiding you through it, so.
Right. Forgive me for not mentioning Mark, but Mark has been a tremendous help.
Right, but he will be your guide through this, so, you know, he’ll make sure that it gets to us and is ready for us to vote on, so you don’t have to worry about that.
Okay.
So do we get, I’m sorry, Leo Patis?
Yep, come on up. Yep.
Leo Patis. So tonight, if you guys have any questions about the wall or obviously the purpose of the wall for youth, girls, and boys to practice against the wall, is, as far as the process is concerned, do we have to give a design spec to the board to have the board approve a design spec on that? Or is that something that can come at a later date that we can get the approval to go and construct a wall, not necessarily, until it is approved, but we’re trying to do fundraising in advance of this June 25 date? So we’d like to try to get an understanding from the board if we can proceed with receiving donations to have that wall ultimately constructed.
I think we would, we could get something on the next agenda.
Yeah, I think similar to what we did for the American Legion.
Right.
If Matt is, if I’m correct, Matt, we can, at least the council can consider approval of the concept of the design.
The actual design will have to be submitted to the borough engineer, he might be behind you, well, actually, the director of All Public Works.
Right.
Who once was the borough engineer, the city engineer. They’d have to look at it because this is a public improvement. If you’re raising the funds, you have to consider if you’re going to do it as a 501(c)(3), you’d have to set that up yourself. If people want to make it as a charitable donation, we can’t do that, public entities cannot be 501(c)(3). So you guys could create a 501(c)(3), raise the funds, and do it that way, then people could get a donation or a tax benefit for making a donation, that’s one thing.
The Summit Foundation has offered to sponsor that in that capacity.
Yeah, you could do that through the Summit Foundation.
Correct.
And then the one thing you just have to be cognizant of is that any improvement, I understand that the gentleman over here has offered to do it, that’s terrific. There’s just one little law in New Jersey that is a complicating factor when you make improvements on public lands or public buildings, and it’s called the prevailing wage law. So we have to make sure it complies with the prevailing wage. So if you, if you have workers doing it, you could, the cost of like the equipment, that’s fine, but people who are installing it, that’s a permanent improvement, they have to pay prevailing wage, which is basically the local union wage for installation of something of a wall or an erection of a wall.
Okay.
But it’s all doable, it’s, you know, so the governing body can pass a resolution. What I would suggest that you guys do is you guys get your concept plan or somebody draw it up, get it over to Mark, and then he can run it through the engineering division to make sure that it complies.
I believe that was sent already.
Yep, we’ve seen that.
Yeah, so if that is, then we can get, we can just do a resolution at the next meeting, just saying that we, that you guys can then rely upon it. And you might want to just, what I would suggest that you do, sir, is that you get the, something from the Summit Foundation, just giving us notification that they’re going to be your 501(c)(3) fundraising arm, so that when we do the resolution, we will notice that in the resolutions, that people know that if they’re doing it for this lacrosse wall, it’ll go to the Summit thing, and there’ll be some type of dedication in like the, you know, the check register or something.
I’ve been the one interfacing with the Summit Foundation, and we’ve covered that, there will be a couple of ways that the tax deductible donations can be made, either wire, check, appreciated securities, all with the designation of the SLC 50th. And then in addition to that, they’ve offered to put a donate button on the website, which we will advertise in our, you know, our announcements, our letters, our notices, hopefully the tab. So we do have that covered.
Great. So if you just give the information to the city clerk, just on that, we can then draft a resolution that will cover all that.
Okay.
In the resolution, so that when the resolution’s passed, people will be aware of it, it’ll be on TV, and it’ll just be further advertising for it.
Great. Yes.
So, Mr. Jacob, if I may, Council President, I have a question. If there, there is, we’ve had some discussion about how the money, the donation, comes to the city and how the city is bound by local public contracts law. So there’s a way to donate the money and maybe deal or not have to deal with going out to bid on a project like this.
No, because you have somebody who’s donating their time, so this, I don’t know this gentleman, I apologize, but I guess he has, he’s in the building trades, he’s going to be donating a lot of his materials, equipment, et cetera. That’s a donation in kind. The only rub is, is that if whatever workers he’s employing on this job to construct the wall, and I don’t think this is a, I play a little cross, the wall’s not the most complex thing in the world to, I probably could construct it, I’m a lawyer, but I could probably do it. It won’t take that that long, you’re really talking about putting in puddings, you know, and then, so it’s sturdy. They just have to be paid the prevailing wage. So that’s just something that, I just don’t want this gentleman to, you know, have, have somebody come out and say, how come you’re not paying prevailing wage?
Yeah, I think Mr. Miniger, Council Member Miniger had something to say.
Thank you, Council President. I was just going to mention that we have reviewed this in Parking Services and Community Programs Committee. We’ve seen the designs, and we’ve seen the location, and the fact it’s being paid for by outside money, your organization, that’s great.
Great.
Thank you.
Just so you know, I don’t charge prevailing wage.
So we’ll, we’ll plan to get this on the next agenda, which would be May 3, and then you’ll get the approval to go ahead with the fundraising, and then when you have more detailed plans, those can be run through the engineer’s office.
Great. Maybe you can answer a question or help me out. So if we’re soliciting donations, we’ve been waiting for tonight before we send out our invitations with the link to the Summit Foundation. So would it be premature to do that, or do we have to wait until?
No, you don’t have to wait, not at all. Summit Foundation is a separate 501(c)(3), so they can raise the funds and first, you know, God forbid you guys decide to not build the wall, then the monies would get returned to the people who donated it. But you guys can commence the fundraising right now.
Excellent, okay.
And then we’ll just formalize it at the May 3 meeting.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you for coming in. Okay. All right. So we are now moving on to public comments. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public who has, about issues that are not topics on tonight’s agenda. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the City Clerk at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. And to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit, to permit all to be heard, speakers are allowed, asked to limit their comments to three minutes, and when you come up, please state your name and your address before you begin your statement. So come on up.
Deborah Oliver, Tulip Street. And I just wanted to make a few comments tonight about a petition that was provided to each member of council and the mayor, and it was also sent to Rosemary with the hope that it would be read into the minutes tonight. I’m here speaking not, I’m here to speak as a member of a group of 831 residents who have signed this petition, and the petition is asking council to please present alternative design and development proposals for the Broad Street Rest redevelopment project. A little bit about the group, the group is calling itself Residents for Summit. I’m not speaking on behalf of the group, I’m speaking as a member of the group, and I want to emphasize that point because it is very much a bottom-up grassroots, organic community association that is growing by the day. And so we each have our own opinion, but what is uniting us is our feeling that, that the council can do better in terms of the Sub District 3 proposal specifically and the overall Broad Street Rest Development Project on a broader scale. So not to belabor the points that are made, I think quite clearly in the cover letter that came with the petition, but the genesis of this group really came from the shock that we all felt when we met at the Town Hall meeting in February, on February 9. And I say shock intentionally because really it was the first time that we’d seen complete visuals of something that has been very thoroughly documented with words on the website, I grant that. But there was definitely an immediate consensus that what we were looking at was really not doing justice to the redevelopment plan. And the redevelopment plan that was signed in 2019 and adopted as part of the Summit Development Regulation Ordinance is a zoning code that is intended to protect the unique character and desirability of Summit. And so this group of 831 petition signers have all overwhelmingly come to conclusions on two main points. There may be differing, you know, issues that people feel, maybe finance, maybe schools, but the two overwhelming points that everyone can agree on is that the scale of the proposed building for Sub District 3 is simply too large, too dense, too long, and also that the parking that is eliminated and not replaced is, you know, just only going to exacerbate all of the existing problems in the city. So what we would really like to see would be alternative proposals. And I think if every member of council were to go back and listen carefully to the Town Hall meeting on February 9, and even listen to the Zoom meeting, which was not, which was poorly attended because it was held during the pandemic, you will see an echo, there’s a chorus, an echo, where everyone is saying the same things, and everyone is asking, could we please see something that fits more with the scale of Summit? And could we please see something that complies with the zoning code that And could we please see something that complies with the zoning code that prior councils and many of you have worked on in the past?" So.
Deborah, I'm going to ask you to finish, you're already at four minutes.
Yes, I'm sorry, okay.
No, that's to wrap up.
So anyway, that's, that is the thrust of the petition. And I will say that we have hired a professional planner who is helping us understand the ways in which the proposal deviates from the, from the development plan. But that really doesn't stand in the way of the layman's approach, which is Summit can do better, you can do better for us, please. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to have a copy?
I have a copy.
We have a, thank you. Hi, Amy DeCibio, 1 Essex Road. I don't want to reiterate too much of what Deborah just said. First of all, I want to thank you again all for your time on this project and everything else that you do for this community. But I do really have to say, I am one of the, the signers of the petition. I firmly believe that the building is too big. I think, you know, one of the things there's been a lot of discussion about is the actual, is the size of the building or the dimensions of the building. The building is five stories tall, which we've all talked about as being too big, but I think one of the most important things about it being five stories tall is the actual footage and its height. It's 65 feet tall. So we keep talking and comparing it to the Basset Building in town, which is also five stories, but that's 56 feet tall. So it's nearly 10 feet taller than that building. I think the length of the building is something that's also grossly out of proportion with any other thing in this town. It's, if you look at the elevation and you look left to right like you would measure the front of your house, when you were measuring the front of your house, you wouldn't leave off the garage, you would include the garage. It's 480 feet long. The Basset Building is 105 feet long, so that's four times, more than four times, the length of that building. But what's also interesting about this building is its depth. So the depth from, on the Cedar Street side, which is the elevation, the length of the elevation on Cedar Street is 170 feet. That's 65 feet longer than the frontage of the Basset Building. It's just a really big building. And I think along with the massing of the building is coming the parking problems. It's too dense, it's too big. And so I think if we consider scaling this back, that the community, it can be something that we're all really proud of. I also think as much as you guys have all worked hard, there are other people in the town have worked hard too, many of them, maybe you, the people who worked on the master plan and on the redevelopment plan. And I think we should really focus and adhere to the restrictions that are in those plans. I guess I would like to understand really what will happen if you guys decide to push this through, and it doesn't comply with those plans, what would be the next steps? I guess the other thing, I think two other things. If we circumvent that plan, I think it, it really takes away the credibility of those who've worked on it and the plans themselves. But I also think it sets a new bar for Summit. If we put a building in this big, it really does change the bar, and it becomes, something that becomes precedent-setting. So I think what we should really take that into consideration. This group is, Residents for Summit is hosting a meeting, a town hall meeting ourselves. We are inviting all of you. I hope everyone in the community will attend. It'll be Wednesday evening next week at 6:30 at St. Teresa's Memorial Hall. The planner that we have hired will be there to discuss some of these things. But again, I hope it's something that we can work together and, and try to resolve the issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Mayor Raydust, and members of common council. I'm Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, 38 Fairview Avenue, and perhaps to no one's surprise, one of the 831 co-signers of the petition that you just heard about. I'd like to address the school impact of the Broad Street West redevelopment project. Since the school district is the largest component of the property tax bill, an inordinate effect on our schools would raise taxes inordinately. At the February 9th, 2022 presentation, Mr. Phil Abramson of Topology citing a calculation by E-Consult Solutions, Inc. of Philadelphia, projected 27 school-aged children from the Broad Street West Sub District 3 redevelopment. Mr. Abramson claimed that number is conservative. So the first question for council is, does that estimate for 140 units pass the common sense test? I submit that it does not. The second question is, even assuming the data sets and methodologies that E-Consult used are rock solid, what if E-Consult is wrong? How could E-Consult be wrong? Consider the Upton at Short Hills, between the Short Hills Mall and the office building at 150 John F. Kennedy Parkway. I understand the Milburn School Board of Education heard that the project would add about 15 school-aged children to the rolls, fewer than 20 in any event. Let's use the number 18. From a response I received from the Milburn Board, the Upton added 41 children to the schools out of a total of 80 school-aged children in the complex. E-Consult may have used a different data set and methodology from the Upton. We don't know. But if one projects the Upton underestimate of 18 to 41 to the 27 estimated school-aged children from E-Consult, the presumptively correct number for the Broad Street West becomes 62. The 62 figure comports better with the common sense test. Can the Summit School System absorb 62 additional school-aged children plus any more that upward fluctuation in the non-Broad Street West population would add? Summit has run out of room to add capacity to the school system's physical plant. The Board of Education is already discussing a bond issue to improve existing facilities. At the April 7th, 2022 Board of Education meeting, Board Member Michael Cologne noted that the funding of the already proposed improvements is substantially in excess of any funds available in the district's operating budget. Any additional physical plant would come at yet more cost to the taxpayer. I respectfully call on council to look again before you leap into the Broad Street West redevelopment project for Sub District 3 on the scale proposed by L&amp;M Toll Brothers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Guy Hazelman, H-A-S-E-L-M-A-N-N, 21 Ruthven Place, and yes, I signed the petition, which last count was up to 8:43. Let me begin, though, by thanking all of you for your service, because I know you were all volunteers, and a tremendous effort and time go into your position. And I've seen a lot of people in this seat over the years. As a matter of fact, my family first moved to Summit in the 1930s, and we've since had now three generations of people graduating from Summit High School. My mother and my uncle unfortunately just missed seeing the Velvet Underground in their first paid concert, which was in the Summit Auditorium at the prom in 1965, for those of you who didn't know that. Tickets were $2.50. I was too young, but I was able to see Willie Wilson play. The judges' chamber right over there behind me is named after the great Ed Dutton, who happens to be my stepfather. He taught me the value and importance of volunteerism, which in this town is second to none, and which is why I refer to it as the greatest small town in America. In the late 19th century and early 20th century, Summit was a getaway and vacation spot for wealthy New Yorkers who would come in by train and stay at the inns and the hotel to relax, and they came because of its suburban character and tree-lined streets, let's not forget. The elected leadership that came before you took great care to plan and set zoning to maintain that character and integrity that's consistent with Summit's history. And this brings me to the Broad Street Development. No doubt, something should go there, but hopefully it's something that continues to maintain Summit's character, its historical character. Personally, I'd like to see Luigi's Pizza be put back in that spot, if you all remember that. But I recognize that's not practical, but I find that this project isn't either, and it veers way off course from that original planning and zoning. Veered way off course is an understatement, because every detail that I've looked at seems to be non-conforming, as you've heard, too tall, too close to the sidewalk, too dense. It's zoned for 72 units, and somehow the proposal morphed into 140 units with little parking, and I don't find that a small miss. And let me emphasize just one point, and Amy brought it up, and then I'll conclude. And it's what I find so troubling in this is that it also, by passing such a gargantuan, non-conforming project, is that it sets a new baseline. It sets a new precedent for the next building project that'll come alone, come along, and that alone actually terrifies me. And let me conclude with this, some more fun math, but I took some liberties with it. I went to the County Board of Elections to find the exact number of votes each of you received. I then added them up collectively and divided by seven to get a, an average. I then took the 843 people on the petition and I divided it by that average. So you could argue that that, and that number is 42.6%. So I could make an argument that you've heard from 42.6% of the voters that you were supposed to represent. And so I ask you just please, humbly, to listen to them, listen to us, and reconsider this project, and give us alternatives. I don't think you want your legacy to be someone who ignored the will of the people and ruined what I consider to be the beautiful integrity of a vintage city. It's the greatest small town in America, and as a lifelong resident of loves this town, I would find that reckless and even an unforgivable error. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Hazelman, do you have a written statement that you could provide to the court, please? Yep, thanks.
I've been here before, you've heard me speak before. I am a signer as well of, of the petition. Others have spoken about things that are important to me and everybody that has signed this petition. But I thought that I would talk particularly about the parking issue and then maybe a couple of other comments. How many of you have ever driven around or walked in where our other affordable housing is? How many of you have ever done it? Have you done it?
Ms. Hardy, this is, we actually have.
Have you been in where the affordable housing is?
Ms. Hardy, this is not something that we do, you don't poll council members like that. You can make your point.
All right, let me ask the audience.
No, you can't, no. Ms. Hardy, you can't do that either.
Ma'am, you have to address the Council President.
Yeah, you, we're not going to go with polling, but I think a lot of us have.
Okay, well, then I'll just assume you have, because I know that you represent the town. But what I want to say is, did you notice their parking lots? They have trucks, they have cars. These people need to work, and they need a place to put their cars. And as I understand the plan right now, there is no place for the people with the affordable housing units to put their cars. And that's a problem. Now, it isn't just those people, though, everybody that works. Now, yes, there are some that are going to walk to the train, and I think that was our image, that they would do that, but I don't think you can count on it. So therefore, we have a big parking problem if this goes forward. There won't be enough places for all the people who live there who want to put their cars someplace. That means that Units 1 and 2, which have not been put into this project, will be ones that come down the road very quickly and won't have been planned in conjunction with the development of this project. So I kind of ask you, if you are dead set against going ahead with this particular project, that you also include the other places where you're thinking about having parking. Because there have been a number of ideas that have been surfaced, getting rid of the post office, for example, and putting parking where the post office is, building onto the library higher and having a high parking garage there. Over the years, these things have been proposed, and I think we would need a concurrent plan with the development there if you are not going to be able to provide the amount of parking that these people need. So that's what I have to say about parking.
You're, you're three minutes now, so if you don't mind wrapping up, please.
I have one or two other things that I would just like to say.
Please wrap up, it's been three minutes.
You can wait a minute. In conclusion, now you've kind of made me lose my thought here, but I worked in banking. I was in strategic planning and budgeting for a very large New Jersey bank for over 10 years. Many projects came up in the bank during that time. We never put together a project where we didn't look at the income and expense, all of the income and all of the expense. I have not seen a statement of income or a statement of operations about this project as it relates to Summit. How can we know what we should do? My last comment is, I just don't know why we have a planning board and zoning if we go through all the trouble of creating these plans with hypothetical situations, and then when we go to do a development, we don't follow what we have said would be our guidelines. Those are my comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Come on up.
Thank you, Council President Fox.
Good evening.
Name is Fred Honold, good evening. H-O-N-O-L-D, 133 Summit Avenue. It's an honor before this board, this council, the mayor. As long as we're in the H category, from Hazelman to Hardy, I figured Honold should step up here.
Okay.
So here I am. I'd like to take a different tact, if I may. I also signed the petition, and in there, you received it, I put out an explanation pretty clearly, that what I found over the decades really is the culture that sets Summit apart. And what I've found in any number of cases is that Summit deliberates, and deliberates, and gets everybody involved, and we do it really right so we get it done just one time. And with that in mind, you've headed up council, third year now, I believe, 2020, '21, '22?
I'm sorry, the third year of council?
No, you headed up. You've served as president of council during your third year, right?
Oh, yes, yes. This is my third year.
So this is kind of the agenda you put forward, and I know you've done a lot of work on it, that's what I hear. You say this will make Summit great again, and a lot of good things will happen out of it, and a lot of people are for it. But since I went to that February 9th meeting, I've heard a lot of people question, "What's going on here? They really don't have the facts, they don't have that much information." And so I'm wondering again, when I've heard people here come to the podium to ask about future meetings, it's vaguely stated that, "Oh yeah, we'll have future meetings," but will there be another meeting scheduled like February 9th? Is that something that you will orchestrate and do? Is that something where you get counsel within the people to talk this through? And so as you think through the culture, I had the good fortune to work on a nonprofit here in Summit on the board for a number of years, and the nature of it was to work across several towns, Milburn, Short Hills, Berkeley Heights, New Providence, Springfield. And in the course of that, the one thing I found, because I sat in on a number of Summit council meetings, is what set Summit apart was the ability to really bring people in and to share a lot of facts and a lot of information. But it seems as if here, in this project, this is a major one, this is a game changer in Summit. So would you consider extending it into the second quarter and third quarter with town meetings and getting people to talk? Case in point, and I'll leave that open there for you to answer at some point, but if you look at, for example, L&amp;M Development Partners, I've looked at the website, and I was a bit astonished to see it's nothing. astonished to see it's nothing but large cities that they're involved in. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but it's pretty informative. 84 different buildings. New Jersey is East Orange, Newark, and Orange. You go into New York City, it's the Bronx, Brooklyn, Manhattan, Queens. You hop out to California, it's LA, San Fran, New Orleans, New Haven, Westchester, New Rochelle. Probably over 25,000 different units, typically 10 stories high, and when you look at the parking issue for them, often it's undersized for those people that are interested in moving into that. So just in wrapping up, I would say thank you for all that you've done, but I think in terms of Summit, if you can do a little bit more, and if the council can come out from behind the dais at some point, host another meeting at the community center, get people involved, have the developers there, but talk directly with people, share the facts, share the metrics, share the numbers. Final close, in terms of facts are important, metrics matter. At that February 9th meeting, when a particular individual asked what the length was, it was a lot of talk among the developers, and they came out with the number 250. I saw several council members there and the city administrator, and nobody corrected that then or since then.
Actually, we have corrected on, it's all on the city's website.
If you, if you look for it, and, but there hasn't been any letters out at all. I saw a letter come out after that correcting a particular individual, but not correcting that fact, how tall it is. So I think the fact is, do you choose to be proactive in terms of getting information to people, or do we have to come to you, and is this the only forum for the exchange of facts? And do we have to go out and dig these facts up, or are you going to bring them to us in a presentation? Final thought, as a prosecutor, would you like to prosecute that case in the public with everybody so we understand and we can work with you? We're friendly on this side. I moved back into Summit a couple of years ago, I'm a registered Democrat, I would support you in that, and I would ask you to do that.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is, excuse me, my name is Carrie Hardy. I live at One Oak Knoll Road in Summit and have been a resident of Summit since 1967. I practiced law here for 53 years, so I feel like I've seen a lot, and I've been involved. I don't mean to, this was not planned to be a coda to what Fred just had to say, but I don't think you should be afraid to kind of slow the ship down and maybe put it in reverse for some more thinking about this. I remember the first, one of the first things that happened when I moved here was, there was going to be a large development over the train station called the Collins Project. It was a large development, and many, many offices were going to be built there. Same kind of reaction ensued as to what you've heard this evening. The Collins Project was defeated. City Hall was supposed to be placed on the Village Green after there'd been a commission to put it in place. Again, the citizens looked and said, no, that's not, please, that's not going to happen. We want you to reconsider, and that happened. The Broad Street parking garage was supposed to be deeded at one point to New Jersey Transit because we were going to get certain advantages from that. Again, people rose up and said, no, or not no, but let's reconsider. That's really what happened. The Primrose School on Morris Avenue, same thing, and the Tier parking lot on the corner of Woodland and Forest Avenue. And then there was going to be a parking garage above the Kemper Lot, and that all changed. And we can change because council has always been willing to listen, and I implore you to do that. And I really do appreciate the fact that you've worked very, very hard on this. But it was during COVID time, much of it, and people were not listening, and now they are beginning to listen, and I think it's important that they be heard, and I know you will do that. Looking forward to working with you. And I did sign the petition, I forgot to say that. Thank you.
Any other?
Hello, Ms. Gagnon. Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. I did sign the petition as well, and Guy's speech really got me thinking, so I hope to stay on my three minutes, I apologize if I don't. I have been a resident here also my whole life, and I'm going to ask the specific questions before I go off target here. I filed this Oprah request, I obviously have no idea what I'm doing, so it just, it got sent back to me, so it's telling me I was asking for just information. So I'm going to ask for my information here, since I'm here, it's probably going to go to you, Erin. So I'm on parking right now, and since there were a lot of questions on, on the petition about parking, a lot of people have concerns about parking. So, the commuter lot. My question, and I'm not sure if this is for you or if it's for Ms. McNally, but the commuter lot, how many cars were parked on the commuter lot on a daily basis? Was there a valet service on that commuter lot? If so, how much did it cost for the valet service? And if there was a valet service, how many extra cars were parked there? Will there be?
What timeframe are you talking about?
This is before COVID, so maybe the years I'm looking for, maybe 2018, 2019, I think '20 was when COVID hit, it was shut down, maybe. Will there be any commuter spots available on that lot with the firehouse, or is that only just for the firehouse? Will there be any parking spots? And is it commuter spots, or is that going to be parking for residential, do we know? So those are just some of my questions that I have, but you can answer at that. And then, how many parking spots were on the Broad Street, the church for Memorial Hall again, I think it was 59, was it stated? So that's the other one. And then I want to thank also Mr. Rogers for the budget, at the last meeting, you mentioned you were going to update technology because all of us were talking about how we would love to be on screen, like Ms. Little. So that gets me to talking about Ms. Little being on screen. So a lot of us, you know, offline, have been wondering why Ms. Little's never present in chambers, and so as an elected official, we're all wondering why she's not present with us. So I think that is something of concern. I don't mind, like, once in a while not being here, but as an elected official, we're all kind of curious why we're here. We all, like, some people have health reasons, we're wearing masks or whatever, but as an elected official, I think the residents of Summit want to know why, as an elected official, you're not present once in a while, or what the reason is, if there's a certain health crisis, like, maybe leave of absent or something, but sometimes I hear her whispering and stuff behind her microphone, and it's, to me, I feel like it's just a little rude, because I don't know what she's saying to somebody at her home. So that's just, as a resident, I feel that that is just not appropriate. So I feel like she should be present here, so that's just something that I'm seeing. She's out in public, you know, she's at coffee places, she's with people, but she's not here. So that's another thing. I also feel.
We have three minutes now, so just please wrap up.
Okay, so I also feel like Guy, like, you know, last year, I haven't been so politically involved until the gas leaf blowers, because I felt the process was not acceptable here in town. So now I'm at almost every council meeting because the process is just not right. And now we have the, this Broad Street West building being built, in this process, we have master plan and we have zoning, we have all these things put in place for a reason. And I just feel like something's happening here, whether it's communication or whether it's the master plan or zoning, nothing's being followed. So some things, I think something should just be handled differently, I don't know. But I'm here every meeting, I wish our elected official was here, so I don't see her mouthing and talking in the background. That's just me. So if I'm here and people are wearing masks and whatever it is, it should just be across the board, so thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin McGoy, 113 Woodland Avenue. I just want to ask a couple of questions, maybe you'll answer them.
I can answer all the questions afterwards, that's how we do it.
Okay, that's great, all right. I think before I just made statements and didn't ask questions, so I didn't get any feedback. So really, all the.
I'm sorry, I'm polite, I didn't hear you, what'd you say?
Don't worry about it.
No.
The questions haven't started yet.
Okay, I thought I just didn't know what you said.
All of the problems and concerns surrounding, all the major problems and concerns surrounding this proposed building would have been avoided if it adhered to the building regulations established in the redevelopment plan, which mirrors the master plan and conforms to the zoning of the areas surrounding this property. So my first question is, why is the proposal so in excess of the building regulations set in that redevelopment plan? Second part, the redevelopment plan is very clear in the number of dwellings that can be built on this property, and that is 72 units, it's very clear. There is an incentive for an additional 16 units, it's very clear, it's, you're shaking your head, but it's 45 units per acre, this is 1.6 acres, that's 72 units. There's an incentive for an additional 16 units if there are extraordinary infrastructure expenses. What are the extraordinary infrastructure expenses, what extraordinary infrastructure expenses will the developer incur, and can you please quantify them so they can be demonstrated to be extraordinary? Because the developer did have his pro forma numbers up there, and I didn't see extraordinary expenses associated with it. What is the timeline for the city council voting on whatever the final agreement is? That's my third question. Will the, will the town, will the town hall meeting be held after the agreement on which the city council will vote on is finalized, so that it can be reviewed by the residents beforehand?
Wait, can you repeat that one again?
Will the town hall meeting be held after whatever agreement you're going to vote on is finalized? So we as residents can see what the final agreement that you will be voting on is before you vote on it. And will you, city council members, be attending the meeting so that we can ask questions of you and so that you can also hear concerns that people have? So, those are the questions. Dr. Powell mentioned in his presentation that he thought 71,000 a unit was a reasonable price for the land. He excluded the workforce housing that, in that calculation, despite those being market rate apartments, I don't know if you've looked at them, but it's $2,175 a month for a 746 square foot apartment. In any respect, if the redevelopment plan was a starting point, why would the developer bid $8 million for 72 units, which equates to 111,000 per unit? It would appear that four to four and a half million dollars would be, would have been a more appropriate price for the land if the developer had any intention on adhering to the redevelopment plan. And also, Bob Powell's numbers, or his, the backup for his financial studies, his models, haven't been made public. I've actually asked for them, I asked for him directly, I've asked for you guys to provide them, and I'm just wondering if you could somehow put those up on the site so we could review them. I think somebody made an Oprah request and they weren't available or something, so I just think that, you know, you have a lot of smart people, a lot of financial people, we could take a look at it and, you know, vet it for you a little bit. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Hi, Sue Roberts, Oakland Place. I also signed the petition, I'm sure there's no surprise there. I met with Greg this morning and I talked through a lot of my personal questions, he was very helpful. A lot of what I have to say reiterates what everyone else has already said, so I'm not going to repeat it, but I think the biggest thing that I cannot get my head around is that all this time was spent doing a redevelopment plan, and we aren't just 1% off of it, 2% off of it, I mean, we're, we're double the number of units that we agreed to in that plan, or that people decided on in that plan. In any other environment, whether it be a work environment, any other committee, if you came in 100% over what the original guidelines were, it would never fly. And I think if council goes ahead with this, it's really deteriorating the trust that the community is putting in any planning process from here on out. Because I can just see a lot of people saying, well, what's it going to matter? Because we, nobody's going to listen to it anyway. And I think, I agree, it needs to be developed, and I would like to see an alternative plan that takes some of these things into account, or all of these things into account, and if they're not feasible, why? Let's just have a discussion about why, so that we can all understand, why can't it be two buildings with some more green space in between? Why can't it be shorter? Why can't it be lower? There's no understanding as to why that is, and perhaps the committees had all those conversations, but we don't know that as the public. So I think we all feel that something's being pushed over on us, that A, wasn't agreed to begin with, and B, we can't get the answers to now. That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
It's actually one comment per person, Mr. Honold, so.
What if you have a second comment?
We don't do that, it's one, three minutes per person on, if you want to comment on something else later on in the agenda, you can do that, but public comments wants the customer.
Good evening, Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. Thank you, council, for your time with everything you do. You know, I was an employee for a long time, I've known everything you do, I know, I know what you deal with on a, on a daily basis. Everyone before me brought up the comments I was going to mention, so I won't waste your time with that. But one thing I did find today, when I was looking through the redevelopment paperwork, is that in the administration section, Chapter 5, 4.3, in the procedural area, there's actually a comment that mentions the developer has to be financially solvent to do the project. So then my question is, why are we subsidizing a developer who is supposed to be financially solvent to do this project? Why are we worried about their rate of return? Nobody worries about my rate of return when I build a building or I build a house in town, you couldn't care less. But yet we're subsidizing a developer, a nationwide, and I think worldwide developer, who should have the financial deep pockets to decide whether they want to do the project or not, not on our backs, not with us worrying about what their rate of return is. What's my, how is this project going to improve my life in Summit? I've been here my whole life, I was born here, raised here. How is this project going to improve my life as a citizen? I don't think we should finance this project on the backs of our citizens by allowing the developer with very deep pockets to get a break, just doesn't make sense to me. So if you could answer that, and I don't expect you to do it tonight, but if you could, that'd be great, but just explain to me how, why we're doing this. This pilot program is to redevelop property that is blighted in towns that have a problem. Summit does not have a development problem. We're building a new project down on Morris Avenue, we did one on the corner of Park and Broad Street, we're doing one behind the Rosary Shrine, not us, but developers are doing it because there's an investment in town, there's a return that they're going to make on these developments. Why are we subsidizing the largest, or one of the largest developers in the state with our tax dollars? It doesn't make any sense to me. So if you could explain that to me at some point, I'd appreciate it. Again, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Point of information, when does the council president have hours so we can meet with her?
You can email me and I'll set up the time to talk with you. I don't, I don't have an office, so I don't get office hours, so, but you can always send me an email.
Thank you for that, we will do that, I appreciate that.
Sure. Okay, so let's.
Should we do any, yeah, I think so.
There are some that are related to Broad Street West and hers.
Right.
Okay, do you want to do the Broad Street West ones?
Okay. I would like to, Council President, speak to the reference to a petition that was submitted.
Sure.
As with anyone who comes to a council meeting and has to identify themselves with a name and address, I received that correspondence that contained those 831 names. This morning, when I received the email request to read the cover letter into the record tonight, I asked whoever the emailer was to please identify who the spokesperson or contact person would be. I did not receive a response. So I defer to our city solicitor to at least confirm my determination that I should not read that, that document into the record because no one's owning it. We have had here people telling us that we have signers, but no one is owning the document.
I think this is just correspondence, just so we're clear, this is not a petition. A petition, this is just correspondence with people writing in support of it. A petition is governed by state statute, specifically 19 Calum 37 1.1, which is, it was really about doing referendums, et cetera. This is correspondence, it's not identified who drafted it, so we'll just accept it as correspondence and treat it as correspondence.
But not to be read into the record?
Not to be read into the record, it's not, it's not a public statement. And frankly, at this juncture, you guys have been accepting written statements, that's not required, you're not. now, open public meetings, people are now coming out to meetings. People can come up and speak at the podium. And we've heard many people speak tonight, and they've identified themselves, made themselves clearly articulated as what the position is on the Broad Street redevelopment, and they've identified themselves as a signer of this, but not as the author.
So with that, I do have three emails regarding the Broad Street West that have identified themselves as the author of their emails. So if I may proceed.
Sure.
The first one is from David Fosgate, and he is at Laurel Avenue in Summit. He says, I understand there is a contingent of residents who will be speaking at tonight's council, common council meeting in opposition to the current plans, size, scale, and scope of the Broad Street West redevelopment project. I am also aligned with those same points of view and sentiment and email you in my position for being out of town this evening on a business trip. Needless to say, I have already raised mine and my fellow candidates' concerns during election season this past year, and they have not changed, given what I have seen now in two public presentations in May of 2021 and February 2022. Sadly, we have started construction of our new firehouse for which the Broad Street West was going to mitigate much of the cost and investment in that project, when so many Summit residents are still demanding the plans be revisited for size, parking, traffic, amenities, financials, et cetera. Time is not on the city's nor taxpayer's side for having spent money we do not have, which is analogous to the ruinous fiscal management seen at the highest levels of government in this country. I do hope council will revisit a plan that promotes responsible growth aligned with the health and welfare of all residents as best possible. The next email comes from Rachel Simon, or Rachel Kramer from Elm Street. Thank you for confirming the height of the building is 65 feet, five stories. Based on the agreed upon redevelopment plan for 2019 and conditional designation and escrow agreement from 2020, both have the height of the building not exceeding 60 feet or four stories. It was not until February of 2022 that the residents of Summit were introduced to the concept and shown images of a five-story building that scales almost the entire length of Broad Street, exceeds zoning and planning guidelines, and will forever change the scope and scale of downtown Summit. With that being said, it has been stated that the revenue from the 10,000 square feet of retail planned for the first floor of the building will be negligible. And this council, is this council in collaboration with developers looking at an option that reduces the size of this building to the original height and story requirements by eliminating the first, first floor retail? If not, why? My second question, Council President Fox confirmed at the March 15th meeting that the design of the building was not changing. Is this still the case? Finally, has there been progress made on the specific details of the next public meeting, which should be taking place before the adoption of the redevelopment agreement? And then I have the last one from Kristin Bush of Witridge Road. I am unable to attend tonight's council meeting. I wanted to submit my comments regarding Broad Street West Sub District Three. I believe this plan to be wrong for Summit for a number of reasons. First, it violates many of the city's zoning ordinances that all of us residents need to adhere. Second, it eliminates much-needed parking in Summit. And third, the building is much too big and tall. Fourth, it's unsightly. The building will be, will set a precedent for Summit going forward and will materially change our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'm going to now respond to those comments.
Quick point of order back on the question that was raised about the cover letter needing a signatory. Anything about that?
The covered letter needing a signatory, yes.
Yes.
Do you want to come up?
We need somebody who is, who's planning.
So basically, when we take a comment, we don't take anonymous comments.
Okay. So you can put Peter LaJoy, 124 Canoe Brook Parkway.
Is that acceptable?
Is he the author?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to do that?
No, we can't do that. No, he'd have to do that.
Excuse me?
Mr. LaJoy would have to do that. You can't, we can't accept you saying that somebody else wrote this. Mr. LaJoy would have to say he wrote this. I don't know who Mr. LaJoy is, but I can't, that's not appropriate.
Okay, you can put that I wrote it.
No.
Deborah Oliver, Tulip Street. It's a group effort, and if that's the necessity, then there's.
Then you can read your statement. If that's, if she's owning it, Mr. DePoe.
Yeah, then you can read it into the record yourself.
Then you read it in the record.
The cover letter?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Didn't want to take the time, but it was.
But you, again.
She already spoke.
Well.
I know, it's fine.
Right. But, okay.
But, you know, but it's three minutes. We're going to set the timer when three minutes.
Yes, do that. You do that. I'll boil this egg.
Well, I have, it's one page long, correct?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, Ray, petition in support of alternative design and development proposals for the Broad Street West redevelopment project. The attached petition, signed by 831 Summit residents, calls on council to present alternative design and development proposals for the city's Broad Street West redevelopment project. Resident taxpayers agree that the BSW area is in need of redevelopment, but we do not believe that the proposals presented thus far to the community come anywhere close to achieving the laudable goals set forth in Summit's 2019 redevelopment plan and the 2016 master plan reexamination. The redevelopment plan and the master plan upon which it is based contain a carefully considered set of guidelines for future land use and development in the city of Summit. Seeking to preserve Summit's unique and highly desirable character, the master plan promises to guide development to maintain and enhance the character of Summit and to encourage residential development at densities which are compatible with existing development patterns. Similarly, the redevelopment plan promises to encourage architecture that is characteristic of Summit with traditional scale and styling that emulates Summit's architecture and urban design. Considering the proposed Sub District Three building, petitioners overwhelmingly agree that the building is massively overscaled compared to the existing fabric of downtown Summit. At five, at five stories high and 480 feet long, petitioners can see that this building would be the largest and longest building near downtown, and that there is nothing remotely comparable in size. The proposed density of 140 units is roughly double what is allowed by the redevelopment plan. Petitioners also overwhelmingly agree that the proposed Sub District Three building has a stupefying shortage of parking. The parking will eliminate and not replace existing parking spaces and does not even provide one parking space per housing unit. This clearly does not fulfill the master plan goal of, quote, "developing a comprehensive parking strategy that addresses existing deficiencies in parking," close quote. Council has given resident taxpayers, the owners of the BSW land, only two occasions on which to view the redevelopment proposal and ask questions. Only one of these presented all three phases of the development, and it was held remotely during the pandemic. None of the comments or changes suggested by the residents have resulted in any changes to the proposed scheme. At recent council meetings, residents have repeatedly called for additional town hall meetings where they might have their questions and ideas put forth in a bona fide, two-way conversation. Regrettably, council has not honored these requests. This petition asks council, again, to listen to the residents' overwhelming objections to the scale, density, and parking problems of the proposal that is before them. We, the residents of Summit, are the most important stakeholders. Respectfully submitted, residents for Summit.
Thank you, Ms. Aller.
We have, we have.
Okay. All right. So I'm now going to try to address some of the issues that were raised. And the other, the other email we had was for an actual.
One of the rest of the resolutions.
Right, okay. So, first of all, it's important that we discuss these issues, and council is listening. And we certainly welcome comments and questions, even, even when people disagree with us. We are listening. But it's important that we're working from a shared set of facts here. First of all, the February 9th meeting was an interim report. We come back to you guys periodically, come back to the public to report where we are at this particular moment as a way to be transparent. We've, this process started in 2018, and we had a meeting in 2018, a meeting in 2019, then things slowed down because of the pandemic. But we, you know, we don't have all the answers, and we don't purport to have, this isn't the final product. This is something that we have come to you, and at that February 9th meeting, we did say that parking was not, had not yet been addressed. And we are still working on parking, and we say that at every meeting. So I urge you to please, you know, give us the time to get the proposal out there to you. It's, you know, this is a process, and it's an iterative process where we are putting things out there, and we are getting comments, and we're hearing what you're saying, we're taking it back, and thinking about how to address everything. So I also want to reassure you that we will not vote on this without having another town hall meeting, another opportunity to ask questions of our professionals. We'll have to figure out, the formula of having seven council members that you can talk to doesn't work because of our council rules. So we have to, you know, in the council chambers, we're able to, to interact much more than in a setting where, like a town hall, with, we can observe, but we really can't transact business in a, in that setting. So understand that, that we have that limitation. So there are some statements that I think do need to be addressed. First of all, the issues about the zoning ordinance, there were some statements that violates the city zoning, that the, the project violates the city's zoning ordinance. It does not. By designating an area in need of redevelopment, we were able to create zoning for the site, which is, which is governed by the redevelopment law. And maintaining control of what's developed on the site is important, and the redevelopment process allows us to do this. We will, you know, we, we are still talking about what is ultimately going to be, we're still negotiating with the redevelopers on this issue. And, you know, so I would, on that one, bear with us a little while, and we will, we will explain where we are and why it is consistent. There's also a consistency requirement that we, if we amend the plan, it will have to go through a consistency review. It will go to the zoning board, and there will be an opportunity for comment. So there's, this, the planning board, I misspoke. I apologize. Anyway, the other thing is, we have not yet addressed the short-term replacement parking on Sub District Three. So we're continuing to work on this issue. I've said it a million times up here, and please believe us, we are not signing this until we feel like this process, this project is adequately parked. And I know Ms. Hardy alleged that there, the affordable units didn't have parking. That is not correct, to my knowledge. So moving on to the history of public involvement in this project, Mr. Fosgate and Ms. Kramer made some allegations. Ms. Kramer suggested that the first time that, that anyone had seen this meet, this building was in February of '22, and that's not correct. At the May 20, 20, I just want to explain sort of the process. I went back and watched the May 20th, 21, 2021 Zoom meeting. And at that meeting, all three sub-districts were presented, and council and redevelopers at that time had intended to move forward with Sub District Two, which is between the library and the Y first. But we heard the public comments at that meeting, expressing concern about the loss of parking between the library and the Y, and attributable to that Sub District Two building, and concerns about traffic that might be generated by a supermarket in Sub District One. I want to clarify, Ms. Hardy suggested things like building parking on top of the library. That was never proposed in this project, nor did we propose to, to remove the post office and put parking, parking on the post office. The post office was, if they were willing to move, would have been developed as something else. But, but that's not happening. So my, my point is that we heard these comments. There were no comments at that meeting about the Sub District Three building. And if you can go back and listen, there, and at that meeting, it was described, it was shown in its current form. It was described as a five-story building with, between 115 and 140 units. You know, so council heard what was said at that meeting, and we elected to move forward on Sub District Three first based on those comments. So to say that we didn't listen and we didn't respond is not a fair statement. You might not be happy with, you know, now that you're focusing on Sub District Three, and if you think it's not what you want, that's your prerogative. But let's just agree on the facts. You can go back and watch the meeting and see what was said. And so while the Sub District Three, and the Sub District Three building did not change appreciably between May 2021 and February 22, the focus did change. So we went from focusing on Sub District Two to Sub District Three as a result of the comments that we heard from members of the public. It's also not correct to say that February 2022 was the first time that the public saw a five-story building. And also, the five-story building is contemplated in the redevelopment plan. So, you know, we, we can talk about how it conforms with the plan or not, and, you know, we, we will, as we get, we will have that conversation. But in answer to Ms. Kramer's questions about the design of the building, that was based on community feedback that we received through the master plan reexam in 2016 and the public meetings in 2018 and 2019. So we, when I said that we would not be redesigning the project, that doesn't mean that there would not be changes to the project, but we're not going to start with a whole new design because the design that we, that we, that we presented is responsive to all the precedent impedages that members of the public looked at and, and picked out as what they wanted to see in 2018. Let's see. Excuse me, you had your time to talk. Ms. Kramer also asked if we were considering eliminating the retail on the first floor to reduce the height of the building. And as far as I can tell, that doesn't, there is not a proposal to put residential units on the first floor, so I don't think that that addresses the problem, the concern that people have about the height of the building. And, you know, the retail does also, it's something that was contemplated in the plan because it, it does activate the street level and create a neighborhood, whereas just housing might not create that same kind of neighborhood feel. As I mentioned, the public meeting, we, we plan to hold one before we take the vote. We're, you know, and stay tuned, we will let you know. We are not racing to get this done. We're taking our time to get this done right, and we're listening. And, you know, there will be much more of this process. I also wanted to just respond to Mr. Fosgate's statement that we've spent money we don't have on the fire headquarters. That's not correct. As with any large capital project, the city, it's a standard practice that the city borrows money to, to build large capital projects. The city has issued notes, and we will, this summer, probably issue bonds for this project, which will allow the city to pay for the fire headquarters over a period of 30 or 40 years. The mounting debt service that Mr. Rogers spoke about is, as a result of past year's capital spending, has presented a significant strain on our operating budget. Much of this debt is attributable to decisions that were made back in 2010 and 2011, when capital budgets exceeded $10 million a year. Since 2018, we've been forced to make tough decisions on capital spending, and capital budgets have been, the leness that they've, that they've been in many, many years, closer to $5 million excluding the, a year, excluding the firehouse. And this year, we cut the capital budget even further to $2.4 million. And that's, this is the first year in more than 15 years that we're paying off more debt than we're taking on. So I would, I would argue that this is hardly ruinous financial management. The fire project, the fire headquarters project is one that needed to be done, but Broad Street West will allow us to pay off some of the debt for the firehouse and other capital projects, as well as to address other revenue shortfalls due to, due to COVID and other structural issues. So I, you know, I just wanted to address some of those issues that were raised. Let's see, I think that covered. As far as the school impact, Mr. Bennett raised that there, there are numerous studies that, that are, that confirm the numbers that we received. And, you know, we are, we have had conversations with the Board of Ed about, about the, the capacity of the schools. And I think everyone is comfortable that we will be able to manage this. The Board of Ed gets, you know, they get what they need in their budget. They present the budget, and they get that. And so I think we're, we're comfortable. And so I think we're comfortable with the numbers we've received. And there is a New Jersey real estate entity, Rutgers, that did a survey, a very, very broad survey where they, they sent out surveys to many, many rental units in the state of New Jersey. And our numbers actually, if under that, would be even lower based, you know, and these are based on actual apartments. They break it down by the size of the buildings, the income levels, affordable versus market rate. And we're, you know, our numbers are conservative based on those.
Studies on the website.
And the study is on our, on the city website as well, so you can find it there. See, I think I've covered a lot of this. I think on the parking, Ms. Gagnon, we're going to have to get back to you because a lot of those questions are Ms. McNanny, so we'll have to let you know on that. Okay, so I think that's, and Mr. Nelson, as far as how this project is going to improve your life, this is, we've been talking about this a lot, that one of the things that we are trying to do is keep Summit affordable. And, you know, we're concerned about keeping taxes in check. And one of the ways that we do that is through, we have two choices to, in how we raise revenue. We raised, you know, to, or Summit's operating expenses. Either we raise taxes, we find another revenue source, and this is another revenue source. So that's one way that it makes your life better. All right, I think that covers all the questions that were asked, so we'll move on. Mr. McGoy, you had your chance.
No, you didn't answer the question.
What was the question about Pop Pal? Oh, about the, about the model? I don't know, I would have to ask. It may be, Michael.
I can respond to that. And I believe I may have said that to you in a response, previous response emailed to me. The model, the specific modeling that was asked about, he presented the summary results of that. We're still in negotiations, so that material right now is deliberative material, which is confidential. We'll release it when he finalizes the report, negotiation is over, people will have access to it. I, I'm just bound by those legal requirements, Mr. McGoy. I know you don't like it, but.
No, no, it's fine. You didn't tell me that. I wouldn't ask.
Make a quick statement?
Yes, absolutely.
I appreciate all your comments and I certainly appreciate the thanks that some of you have given to the members of council here. And I probably shouldn't go this, go here, but I just feel compelled. The seven people on this council, the volunteers, the two that are unable to join us personally, work really, really hard. And we may not all agree, in fact, we don't always, always agree. But their number one goal is to do what they think is best for the city. It has truly disheartened me in this town that is run by volunteers, as you say, Mr. Hazleman, that there are folks who say that we're trying to put something over on them or that it has been said, and it was in a comment in one of the designers of the petition, that council members are lining their pockets from the developers. That's atrocious. It's shameful and I should not need to defend members of this council because we've never had this before. And this is our town. We, we're your neighbors. We all want to do what's right here. And to make comments like that and then it's been talked about, I've heard somebody has stopped me in town and asked me about it. Oh, for God's sakes, this is not what we're about. So I would implore you to believe us, that we're trying to do the right thing. And Council President Fox is correct, they are listening, we are all listening. We're not sleeping because we're thinking about this all the time. And I'm not trying to get anyone to feel sorry for us here, but I just think it's wrong for folks to be accusing people at this dais who work hard of something that's just not accurate. It's crazy. So I really am glad you're here. I'm glad you keep coming. We're learning. We'll get to a place that's good for our community. But if you hear people saying things like that, please feel free to speak up about that as well. Thank you.
Unless anyone has anything else to comment on.
Councilmember Little has a question.
Oh, Councilmember Little. Sorry.
I'm going to go further because I'm not, I'll speak again.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm unconventional that we're speaking, but I feel like this is an incredible project. It is going to, through you, Council President, it's going to impact this town exponentially. I would say that I really, I thank everybody for coming here. I don't know what's being said behind the scenes, but I don't feel like anyone has come here to attack our integrity tonight. I think that what you are doing is what we're supposed to do and deliberate and listen. I think this is, it is a large building and I hope that we get to a place that we know that this is, something is going there, 100%. And it absolutely should unite this town across the political aisle, across families, across anything, whatever it is in this town. I feel like we should be able to rally around whatever is built. And so thank you for coming. Thank you for making sure that we hear you because I think that's what we're here for. So I hope that we do get to a place where there's a building that is suitable. I'm concerned about the scale. I just want to say this tonight because we're here and everybody's talking about it. So I'm concerned about the scale. I'm concerned about the parking. And I just want to say that you've done an extraordinary job of listening and making sure that people have an opportunity to speak. So thank you for what you're doing and I'll stop.
Thank you. Look, I think we're all concerned about getting this right. And, you know, I appreciate what you said, Councilmember Allen. You know, we don't take this lightly. We know this is an important decision and, you know, and I really do want to impress upon you that we're not satisfied with how the parking is at this point. We need to work on that and that's something we are, you know, we are focusing on. We will not sign off until we're comfortable, until we've, you know, until we've had conversations with people, until, you know, we've, we've reached that point. I mean, we are not there yet and I think, please give us the time to get to that point. You know, you're saying we're racing. We are not racing and we're not talking about first quarter. First quarter is pretty much over. We're, you know, we're into second quarter, we may be into third quarter. It's, you know, we'll take as long as it takes to get it right. So please keep the dialogue going with us, but, you know, and, you know, I don't think that the mayor was suggesting that you were the folks who were making those comments.
No, 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 that was not the point. It was someone on your list.
But certainly, you know, if you look on social media, it's certainly out there and it's, there's some really ugly stuff being said and I think it's, this is, we're better than that as a community. That's all we're saying. So, you know, let's, let's try to keep this based on facts and, you know, and have those dialogues based on facts. So with that, I'm going to move on. I think we've finished our.
Council President?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
I've been waving my hand.
Sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you. I would like to have the opportunity to respond to Don Nelson's comment where, because I think it's come up several times, that there is some desire to benefit the developers and why are we subsidizing the developers? And I don't think it has been responded to on how revenue is raised and how with public private partnerships, a rate of return is a requirement and that there are incentives that are coming from the federal government and the state government to make sure communities all across this country are able to benefit from these types of projects. And so I would, I would like for Administrator Rogers, who I think can do it a little more eloquently than I can, about why this is not, why this is not out of the ordinary for us to be concerned about a rate of return to try to get the best developers in the country to do work in Summit. I think that needs to be answered, Council President, and I hope Administrator Rogers or yourself or Nora can respond to that. I will even be open to Councilor Barton.
Even. Do it.
If it needs to be responded to.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Something that is happening all over the country, it's a good thing. My Councilwoman Allen said, I am grateful for the people coming here and raising their concerns. Maybe they, maybe they haven't heard them. It is our responsibility to agnoisiate them, respond to the same things over again and clarify when misinformation is being repeated, meeting after meeting. I don't care about the Facebook slander, that's expected, but coming to the meeting, you have to have the opportunity to respond to incorrect information. And I hope Administrator Rogers doesn't mind me putting him on the spot to address that question.
Take it away.
I was nominated first, so I'll speak.
Even you.
To address the profit incentive, I think just by definition of what a private corporation does, it is for profit. And certainly, when you're financing a project like this, there's an expected internal rate of return and cost on capital and things of that nature. I think many people in this community can understand that. As far as the term subsidy, I would like some clarification on that and I can speak to Don offline about what he's thinking about. But as far as what a redevelopment, why the city chose to go down the redevelopment road was really to be able to take, look at something, we own this property, we, this council and the community at large were a part of the process to look at this and say, okay, we're going to designate this area in need of redevelopment and met the criteria. And what it allows for is municipality to then engage in a negotiation with the designated redeveloper. And the term pilot has come up and been explained and perhaps that's what Don is thinking about as far as the subsidy. But in actuality, the reality is that a redeveloper, when they do make application for pilot agreement, has to meet the but-for test. But for this pilot agreement, this project can't be financed. Okay, so, and I'm just looking at Mr. McGoy right now with this. That's, someone who can look at this and say, it can't be financed or that this project could be financed without this, certainly, but I can tell you that the numbers would be much larger, what would be required for what they would need to get something that can be financed. And I'm not going to debate what the right IRR is and what we presented to the public about this project. But what I can say is that from the municipality standpoint, the pilot agreement is the, is the real sole economic development tool that we have in order to generate more revenue from a project like this, a land use project. So there is an incentive for, that will benefit the community for that reason. Now, if you're, if you're looking at, there's two, there's either an ordinary tax situation or this is pilot scenario. And from the municipality standpoint, since it is our property, it is the most financially advantageous tool that we have available. From another entity's perspective, that is not getting any from like just an ordinary tax, well, then one could argue that that's, that's the arguments been made about the schools. Again, they present a budget, they get the funding, they live within their 2%. But there is something they do get out of it as far as an ordinary tax on the land, which we've talked about, and they do still get something. And a project like this, they would get a lot more than they're currently getting. So there are financial advantages to what we're doing that benefit the community. As far as this project goes, unless you live in this, in this building, you're probably not going to get any benefit out of it. There might be a retail use that you go and you frequent and you'll get a use out of it. There's, I think, Don, you've looked at this land from a, for many, many years, being positioned over there in that property. I think we can all envision something that is different. It is clearly debatable about what that is. And, and so that's why we're here, but hopefully I've addressed sort of what that question was.
Thank you. All right. So if there are no other comments, we'll close the public comments and then move on.
You can answer one question.
No, we're not, public comment period is over. That's, okay, so we're moving on now to ordinances for introduction.
Council President, if I may, ID number 9608, ordinance establishing a pedestrian mall at Maple Street.
Okay, so Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9608, an ordinance establishing pedestrian malls, Maple Street. This ordinance will establish a pedestrian mall on Maple Street between Union Place and Springfield Avenue and Springfield Avenue and DeForest Avenue. This ordinance will facilitate the use of Maple Street for outdoor dining and other permitted uses. One of the only bright spots of the pandemic has been outdoor dining. It has been very popular with our residents the last two years and economically helpful to local businesses. We will have a hearing on this ordinance at the May 3rd council meeting. I ask that we introduce this ordinance.
Councilmember Little, are you there to second? Thank you. All right. So yes, we need a roll call.
Do council?
No, we don't. No, it's just roll call, right?
A little tired.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. And this hearing will be on, the next meeting on May 3rd and we'll take comments then. So moving on to resolutions, we have two finance resolutions. Councilmember Barton?
Okay, thank you, Council President. So this is number 9592. This resolution authorizes concurrence with the 2022 Board of School Estimate Certification of Required Funds. To review the process thus far, the staff and Board of Education came up with a preliminary budget earlier this year. It was reviewed and approved by the Board of Education. Then it was approved by the Board of School Estimate, which consists of two members of the Board of Education, two members of council and the mayor. This resolution is the final step in the approval process for this single most, single largest allocation of funds. This school budget proposed this year is approximately $80 million. This is about 50% of the overall tax bill. And though there were no public comments at any of the budget discussions, I do think it's our responsibility to mention a few important things. There are three of them. They mostly echo what was mentioned at the prior meetings. So first, thank you to the Board of Ed staff, Board of Education and Board of School Estimate for the hard work in keeping the increase in this budget under the 2% cap this year. Second, Summit has seen a significant increase in revenue from pandemic relief funding and state aid, but of course, we are always hopeful that we will get more. Third, thank you to the Summit Education Foundation that since its inception has been incredibly generous. I'm a product and a beneficiary of Summit's excellent public education. I think this is. I think this is a good budget, and I think we should support it, so I move to adopt this resolution.
Aye, second.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, I guess we're ready for a roll call vote.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Barta.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Okay, that resolution passes, and then we're moving on to the second finance resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9603. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations within the municipal operating budget. Three reminders: The temporary operating budget can only be 26.5% of the budget from the prior year. Second, the temporary operating budget is in place until the final operating budget is passed, which hopefully will be at the next meeting. And three, again, this is not an emergency. This is only the statutory language required by the state government so that this council can authorize funds to be transferred into their appropriate accounts and pay the bills in a timely fashion. The total amount of this transfer is $23,000, bringing the total temporary operating budget I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now moving on to Capitol Projects and Community Services. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President.
Take it away.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9538, to authorize 2022 Arbor Day festivities. The city, along with Summit's Shade Tree Committee, will celebrate Arbor Day on Friday, April 29th, 2022, at Summit High School. This city takes great pride in our trees, and as we all know, Summit has been designated a Tree City USA for 26 years. The celebration will include Mayor Radist, Superintendent of Schools Scott Hupp, Summit High School Principal Stacy Grimaldi, and City Forester John Lenson, who will be giving a presentation on the importance of trees in our community and the value trees have in our everyday lives. I ask that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to cap number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9528, to authorize execution of an agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for guide rail installation at Hobart Route 124 intersection. At the council meeting on December 1st, 2021, this body supported installation of a guide rail by NJDOT at the intersection of Route 124 and Hobart Avenue that would connect to the existing guide rail along Hobart Avenue. The new section of guide rail is a needed safety enhancement. Tonight's resolution is to agree to the installation and all future maintenance of the guide rail by the City of Summit. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Capitol Projects, number three.
Thank you, Council President. Number three is 9441, to award the bid, Spring 2022 Citywide Tree Planting for $53,865. SJC Lawn Care of Cranford, New Jersey, was the winning bid among the six the city received for the citywide tree planting this spring. The work includes the installation and watering of 125 trees within the public right-of-way throughout the city. SJC Lawn Care completed the fall planting last year to the city's satisfaction while working with the city forester and our own DPW. The cost of the tree planting will be offset by $8,000 from a 2021 Union County grant. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from the public?
Don Nelson again, 20 Plain Street. When these trees are planted in the right-of-way, can we make sure that the residents are aware of that as opposed to just a sign being put there? Several years ago, there was a tree planted on property that I owned. Now it's growing through my communication wires and my electrical service, and I've called multiple times to have the tree trimmed, and nothing's happened. So can we just make sure, actually, when they planted the tree, I actually called and said, why did you plant it there? And it's still there. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration when these trees are planted around town, that we don't invade people's overhead wires. If you'd like to come down and take a look, it's between 22 and 24 Plain Street.
I do think, though, that, I do know, that one of the changes that have been made since that tree was planted was that they are only planting trees that don't get very high if they put them below wires.
Good, great.
And I believe that people are asked if they want the trees. I don't think trees are placed.
Yeah, but I guess in this case, there wasn't a response, and it just went without looking straight up.
Well, yeah, things, good news, things have changed.
Yes, the process has improved. Okay, are there any other comments from members of council, members of the public? So I would like to thank Union County for funding this. They've been very helpful in helping us get to our 1,000 trees in four years. I think we're, Mr. Schreger, do you know where we are numerically in our 1,000 trees campaign?
Approximately 780 right now. This will bring us up to 900, and then whether we do a fall planning or through some of our Capitol projects, we'll get close by year end.
So we're actually. Okay, great, so we're getting there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great news. Thank you, and thank you to Union County also, and to the DPW for all the work they've done.
I'd like to make a PSA, that we had a tree put on our front, you know, on the right-of-way the year before last, and it really looked like it was gone, gone, dead last year. And among other people, John Lenson says, really not a good look for the city tree to be dead on the mayor's lawn. But that said, they came back and looked, and it's really, it just had a rough start. So it's doing, it's doing very well this year. So we were going to have to pull it, but we're not, so it's going. So anyone gets a tree, and it kind of wobbly for the first year, give it some time.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also did want to thank the Shade Tree Commission, because they've done a lot of work in terms of, you know, getting publicity out there, getting information to people about their trees and how to care for them. So it's a team effort. So with that, I guess I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So moving on to Capitol Projects, number four.
Thank you, Council President. Number four is 9475, to award the bid, Cul-de-sac Improvement Project for $319,859.99. Midwest Construction of Warren, New Jersey, was the winning bid among the 11 received for the cul-de-sac improvement project. The work includes the repair of sidewalks and curbs, installation of curbs, upgrades to drainage inlets, sanitary sewers, milling and paving of the entire length of Meadowbrook Court, Crest Acre Court, Carleen Court, and Woodcroft Road. Midwest Construction has completed various Capitol improvement projects for the city, and their work has always met the city's standards. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Barta.
Thank you, Council President. I've heard from a lot of residents, especially on Meadowbrook Court, about the need for this project, and I'm thrilled that we're moving forward with it, and thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, any other comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So I think you can bundle five, six, and seven. Would you like to do that?
Definitely five and six. Six and, well, I can do all three, but five and six have the alcohol liquor, and seven doesn't.
However you want to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah. Thank you, Council President. Number five and six, it's ID number 9599, and number 9600. This is to authorize temporary parklet location and execute a license agreement, the Office of Summit, LLC, DBA, The Office Tavern Grill, and to authorize temporary parklet location, authorize installation, and execute a lease license agreement for extension of liquor license premises, Villa Restaurant Group, DBA, Piatino, at 67 Union Place. At the April 15th, I'm sorry, at the March 15th council meeting, council authorized the temporary expansion of the parklet program to provide restaurants with additional outside dining areas to produce economic relief during the COVID-19 pandemic. The Office Tavern and Grill and Piatino have requested parklets in front of their restaurants on Union Place, and DCS has confirmed that it is feasible to allow both restaurants the use of two parking spaces each next to the fire zone. The parklets will enable the Office and Piatino to serve more customers and will include the sale and consumption of alcohol within the parklet. This approval is contingent upon the city receiving consent from the New Jersey State Division of Alcoholic Beverage Control. I ask that we approve both resolutions.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Barta.
Thank you, Council President. Parklets helped make the downtown one of the great places in New Jersey, as awarded by the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association. So I support the continuation of the parklet program. I think it's important to again mention with plenty of warning that discussions will continue about the future of the program, especially in regard to the cost. There is a public benefit to the parklets, but that has to be balanced with the public benefit of the parking. I look forward to continuing these conversations with SDI, the Parking Utility, and in our committee. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from members of the public?
Councilman Barta, thank you for bringing up SDI. I brought this up before about the outside area and beautifying the outside area, the little containers, the wooden, not the wooden, but the metal that surrounds the plantings. And I don't know, when SDI was here, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, are they in charge of those areas outside the parklets?
Are you talking about the planting boxes?
The planters, yeah, the boxes that have those little things, or those, the town, or is that the restaurant or the office space?
I think, I believe it's the property owner that's.
The property owner. So I had asked that maybe we could try to do something and like get a gardening committee or something to beautify that, because now it's springtime. And as I was walking my dog today, I noticed that nothing had been done. So do you think that maybe we can try to get something established where we can get in touch with Downtown Inc. and get that in process where we can, like, beautify that? I think it would just make it so much nicer when we're sitting outside on, in the street eating, and we see those, they're just not very pretty. So we can do something to get the residents out there helping or something, the storefront owners, to make them look a little nicer.
We can raise it at the SDI meeting.
That would be great.
But they have a budget, and they stick, they adhere to their budget. Their money mainly comes from the taxes that are on the downtown property owners and also the revenue that's received through the farmer's market. And the budget is set annually, so it's already been set, so I can raise it, but I don't, I don't know what they're going to say.
Okay, or maybe the storefront owners, we can talk to them about beautifying it? I don't know, something to put in as an ordinance, maybe? Can we, can something ever be done about that?
It depends, some storefront owners are more willing, like, for instance, in front of Fiorino's on Maple Street.
I know, it's beautiful.
But it's up, it's been a multi-year, like decades-long conversation with storefront owners, because they all have various and sundry expenses, and they don't feel, some of them feel it's important to do, others do not. So it's not a cut-and-dried, one-fits-all kind of situation.
So, Mayor, can I ask you this question? Since I have an eighth grader, and they all need volunteer hours, is it something that we can put in with the middle schoolers, go down to volunteer?
If you're willing to organize it.
I can put that in, but I think it's something that we can look forward to. I mean, I remember, growing up here, we used to paint the storefronts for Halloween, and it was something that we looked forward to doing. I just think that if we got them more engaged to the community, they would respect it a little bit more instead of stomping on it. So something to think about.
Right. Well, certainly, it's a, it's a suggestion, it's a good suggestion, and let's see where it can go. Okay.
Council President, I just wanted to qualify. If she's talking about the tree wells, or if you're by one of the coffee shops, they have planters. So obviously, a planter that is purchased by the business, they're going to do that. They're going to have to put the flowers in. But the tree wells are SDI. So, and I think, I could be wrong, but I thought SDI said they would start planting around May 1st. Am I correct? So are you thinking about boxwood? Is that through you, Council President?
Just all those things with the metal around them, whatever.
Okay, so that would be the tree well?
Still, yeah.
Okay.
Used to call them wickets. Yeah, SDI does the initial planning, but it's up to the storefront owners to do, you know, to do the watering and to take care of them. Although we do some watering, but not a lot.
Yes, SDI, the last few years, actually, over the last decade, has paid to have plants put in there, and then we'll do the watering when they're in there. It's just longer term. It's a very tough climate downtown to get something, and you actually have two climates, because the north side gets sun, the south side doesn't, so it is, it is a challenge. We do welcome when people just adopt them kind of on their own, and we have had scouts and volunteer groups definitely help clean them up some, so we're open to that if it could get organized.
Is that, where is that run from? Is that run from SDI or from DPW?
All right, the watering is DPW, funding the plants is SDI.
But like, as far as if a scout group wanted to do?
It's through the city, then.
Okay.
They come to the city and just do it. But we don't organize groups to come to the city. They come to us.
Okay.
But there's, I'm so sorry, there's a beautification group in SDI.
That's different. That's about the building beautification. It's not so much the plants and things.
It's not the plants?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schreger. All right, so, all right, I think I've, all right, so are there any other comments about?
We started on parklets.
About parklets. I have to figure out what we were talking about, yes. So this is about resolutions five and six, so if there are no comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to cap number seven.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9601, to approve a temporary parklet location at Union Place and authorize installation of the same Dewey 360. The city received a request for a parklet from Dewey 360 Restaurant, and DCS has determined that it would be viable to allow this restaurant the use of two parking spaces to the left of the handicap space on Union Place for outdoor dining. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Capitol Projects, number eight, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 9582, authorize the use of Maple Street Road closure by Home Power Yoga. Home Power Yoga submitted an application to the City of Summit to use a portion of Maple Street between Springfield Avenue and Union Place for outdoor exercise classes. The area of Maple Street they intend to use is right near Lululemon. They have requested to use the space on Saturday and Sunday mornings only. This resolution will allow, will allow Home Power Yoga to use Maple Street as long as all requirements of the city's, the city clerk's office are met. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Barta.
Very quickly, thank you, Council President. I just think it's important to mention that it's not just restaurants who benefit from Maple Street closure, it's other businesses as well, and I support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're now on to the last Capitol Projects resolution.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 9595, request agreement with the County of Union to permit installation of permanent dog park at Transfer Station property. Common Council passed a resolution on July 27th, 2021, that authorized the temporary installation of a dog park at the Transfer Station. It was done as a trial program to gauge interest from residents and gather feedback, and based on all the evidence, the dog park was a great success. Voting to approve this resolution tonight will allow the city to enter into a formal agreement with Union County for a permanent dog park. Getting to this point is a long time coming. Government doesn't always work at the pace we would like, but we made it. This dog park will be a great asset for Summit and a nice gathering place for people and their precious dogs. We would not be voting on this resolution tonight without the dogged determination of so many people. But Councilman Matt Gould is top of mind tonight, because he was a champion for this project. And so with that, I ask that we approve this resolution.
End of the question, wait a second.
Any comments from members of council?
Yes, I do, just a question.
Yes.
Does the agreement stipulate the exact dimensions of that fence around the dog park? I'm sure it does.
I'm sure it does. I'm just wondering if it, if there's any room for expansion or movement in that.
I think that would be, Mr. Schreger, can you answer that?
To you, Council President. So, this resolution is just requesting that agreement, so we don't know what conditions or stipulations they will have. There are some guidelines put out by actually our JIF that we will follow. Could we expand it beyond what was there? As long as the space is there. So, we're open to it. We tried to put that up as cost-effectively as possible last year. We had some feedback regarding small dogs, large dogs. So, as this becomes more permanent, we would take that into account and follow any guidelines and whatever the county requests.
Thank you. And what about the days, in the past, we've done like Thursday, Friday, Saturday as the days? Is it going to be every day that the Transfer Station's open now?
We are definitely open to that. We'd be more available to that. We still would avoid some of the free market days.
Yes, right.
Because that creates a little bit of chaos in the parking there. But with it, even after the first few weeks last year, we were able to just, you know, it kind of ran itself, which was good. So, we're open to opening it more.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Allen?
No, you first.
Okay, sure. I was just curious if the Capital Projects Committee has talked about potentially having another location for a dog park since this one has been successful.
We have not gone down that road. We're just hoping that we get this one up and running and one will be enough for now.
It's been a topic that's been discussed over the years, but it's, it's more complicated when you get into neighborhoods where, you know, the beauty of the Transfer Station is there is not anyone living on, you know, on the sides of it that is affected by the noise of dogs barking or things like that. When you get into neighborhoods, there's more resistance. So, I think this was, seemed like the logical first place to start. Councilmember Vartan?
Just, I don't mean to...
And then Councilmember Little after that.
I don't mean to make people, you know, emotional, but I, you know, I think, and I smile every time I think about Matt talking about trees. And I think, I smile every time I think about him talking about snow brine and how it's not beet juice. And every time we talk about a dog park and, you know, I just, he was an extremely passionate man and I miss him. And it makes me so happy that we get to continue to make progress in this city based on things that were so important to him. So, I'm in support of this for my buddy Matt. Thank you.
You're here. Councilmember Little.
Councilwoman Marsha kind of sits my under there.
Sorry.
He has a way of doing that.
Sorry, Beth.
I find it also very fitting tonight that we're moving on both food planting and the dog park because, you know, I can't be with Matt, I spent many, many, many hours walking towards him and his two passion projects were trees and dogs, the dog parks. And it's just really gratifying to see that his influence and his passion is still being felt in the city. I hope it is for, you know, decades to come because he was such a great influence on the city and all of us. And I'm really proud to be sharing his legacy forward tonight with both those projects. So, I'm going to be enthusiastically voting yes for both myself and for Matt tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Comments from the public?
Council President, I also want to, heard that comment about Matt, and I also would like to suggest that the dog park be named after him. Maybe that could be into consideration. I also would like to maybe suggest a different ground covering for that area as it got very muddy and after it rained. I know a lot of people, that was one big complaint, that it took a long time for it to dry out, so the dogs were just covered in mud. So, but thank you very much. I know this is going to make the town really excited. I'm very excited as I'm a dog lover too, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, with that...
Council President, I have one comment that was received regarding the dog parks. This comes from Christine Lejoy of Canoe Brook Parkway. She's also the Free Market Steering Committee Chair. And she writes, "I have a question about the permanent status of the dog park at the Transfer Station. As the Chair of the Summer Free Marketing Steering Committee, I am concerned about the parking situation on Saturdays that they are open, we are open. We are very busy all day and the parking lot is full. In the past, the dog park was not open on the days the summer free market was open. Will this continue to be the practice moving forward? Thank you for your consideration."
And I think that question was already answered, that on free market Saturdays, the dog park will not be open. So, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on to law and labor. We have four resolutions. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Council President. I will introduce Resolution ID number 9598 to authorize execution of a lease license agreement, use of the sidewalk in front of the UPS store, which is on 55 Union Place, and it's by the Office of Summit, doing business as the Office Tavern Grill. As we heard Councilman O'Sullivan talk about the parklets, this resolution is a companion with that annual reauthorization of the lease license agreement so that they can have their liquor license calculated as well. And so, this, this resolution is authorizing the consumption of alcoholic beverages in public streets or in public places. And the Office has a, will be issued a license fee calculated based on their per-table basis in accordance with the city's table fee structure. They've provided proof of a million-dollar liquor liability policy and have also gotten permission from the adjoining store, UPS store that they are next to. And so, I move this resolution forward for approval.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to law and labor number two.
Thank you, Council President. ID number 9610 to grant a place-to-place liquor license transfer by the OSY LLC on November 15th. At our council meeting, we approved a person-to-person transfer liquor license issued to the Nimish Corporation located at 512 Morris Avenue. And this is a pocket license, Resolution number 418. OSY LLC has purchased the property of 490 Morris Avenue and filed for a place-to-place transfer of their license with the city clerk's office. OSY is qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by New Jersey statutes and has passed all preliminary inspections from internal city departments. And so therefore, we are asking for approval of this resolution for the liquor license transfer.
I second.
Okay. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
So, this building, I'm sorry, Council President, so this building is, was a heated debate about the Primrose Building. Is that the correct location that this liquor license? So, a couple of, is that, is that correct, Council Harrison? Is that correct? So, us in the neighborhood are kind of curious as what they plan on doing with that liquor license there since it's right across from the school. Does that go into planning then or zoning? Or are they, does anybody have any idea? As we see it on the docket tonight, we were kind of curious and I was here, we wanted to raise the questions of just kind of understanding what a liquor license was going to be doing right across from the school and just kind of getting on that.
They have the right to, if they can buy it, they have a right to place it anywhere the zoning allows.
Okay. So, it's just, it was just being moved from down the street and then up the street? Is that correct? Same person? Is that what?
No.
No. Council President, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, the liquor license was sold by the owner at 512 Morris.
Oh, okay.
And because the new owner did not have a location, a physical location yet, the terminology that the state uses is to pocket the license.
Oh, okay.
And now, the building at 490 is owned by the same company or individual that purchased that liquor license and they're moving to 490 Morris Avenue. That's where, and they would not be able to occupy that location if they did not meet the zoning regulations to be zoned there. So, they've been through the approvals through the city for review and have met all the requirements, so that's where they're going.
So, there's nothing going into building? Like he's just has, we don't know that?
They're going to sell, they're retail distribution, so they'll be selling bottled and cases of liquor, whatever, whatever they're selling.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any comments? Any other comments?
I'm sorry. Just to clarify, is it, do you mean like a liquor store?
Yeah.
So, the, a liquor store will be going in...
Retail distribution is the terminology they use as the license.
Okay. So, are we anticipating a liquor store will be going in there or it's just?
Yeah.
That's where the physical location is?
And that's under the...
In the old Primrose Building?
There, well, it was never, it was never Primrose.
Right.
But...
Somehow I just got that label.
Primrose, Primrose application was denied and the, under the current existing zoning laws, a retail distribution liquor store is allowed to be there. They don't have to go, probably don't, for just having that use does not need to go through zoning because it's already a permitted use, unless I'm mistaken, Matt.
No, if it's permitted use, they don't have to go through zoning unless they need a variance like a...
For change the building.
Change the building or side variance, something like that, but it would just go to the planning board. What you said, if they've already done that...
It went through the internal review.
So, that would be a liquor store.
And Council President, through you, this is a neighborhood business district which had a liquor store functioning for more than 10 years before and it's just moving, right? So, it's not...
For an owner, but it's moving.
It's not that different from the situation that has been...
But it's allowed under the zoning.
Right. And it's allowed. Yeah.
Okay.
It is irritable.
Good news.
All right. So, with that, did you have a question?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hit motion carries. And we have one more, oh, two more. Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Council President. I'm looking at ID 9611 to authorize a full-time payout for a fire department employee. And this was as a result of our closed session discussion. And I don't know, I just want to double-check, is it permissible for me to say his name?
Yes.
It's a retired, just a payment.
Yes.
Yeah, you can absolutely say his name.
And so, fire, retired firefighter Michael Cook, who retired effective May 1st, 2022, is entitled to a payout in the amount of $5,853.08. And he has accumulated 95 and three-quarter hours and is entitled to this payout. And I am requesting approval of this resolution to authorize that payout.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to law and labor number four. Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Council President. And our last law and labor resolution, number 9547, is to appoint rent and commission members. And this is also pending our closed session where we have two residents in town, Tina Rosen, who will be fulfilling a three-year appointment, which will expire on December 31st, 2022. And she's filling the unexpired term of President Gonzalez. And our second rent commission member is Kelly Montgomery, who will be filling a unexpired term for rent commission member Salsedo. And that term will expire on December 31st, 2023. I ask for approval of this resolution to appoint these two volunteers.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? So, we thank both of these volunteers for stepping up. We will now have a full complement on the rent commission, so that's, that's good. And it's an important function, so we appreciate everyone's willingness to step up. So, with that...
Council President?
Yes.
I just, I neglected to clarify that the rent commission member Salsedo is actually staying on the rent commission and into another position. Am I saying that correct, Mayor?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. So, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we have one more resolution from Safety and Health. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Safety and Health Resolution number 9597 is a resolution to accept the Reeves Foundation three-year grant challenge, which is going to help fund the new fire headquarters equipment. And we are very pleased to accept the Reeves Foundation has agreed to do a three-year grant challenge for the city's fire department for content and equipment for the new fire station. They are granting $100,000 if the city is able to raise $300,000 in cash and pledges by December 31st, 2022. Obviously, we're incredibly grateful to the Reeves Foundation for doing this grant and we are looking forward to working with the public to raise additional funds so that we can get this, the fire department equipment purchased and ready for them to move into their new headquarters. So, again, many, many thanks to the Reeves Foundation for doing this and I very enthusiastically applaud we approved this resolution.
I enthusiastically second. Are there any comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And let's see, we're now on to the consent agenda. Unless anyone has anything they want to pull out and discuss separately, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to council members' comments, new business. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President.
Three things?
Nope, just the one. The workers at the Starbucks on Union Place in Summit are currently in the process of organizing a labor union. I lend my voice in solidarity as they seek to improve their workplace and their lives. I hope that Starbucks will recognize the union and negotiate a contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have comments? Do I see anyone over, Councilmember Little? Are you raising your hand?
Yes, I am.
You're a tiny little box, so, okay, there you are. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add on the mayor commented earlier, talked about some of the comments that is made of council members. I, you know, I've obviously did along with all the council members, the subject of some of those comments. Looking hard to take, obviously. Also, in addition to that, at almost every council meeting in recent memory, at least one member of the public, if not multiple members of the public, have commented on my last presence in the chambers. And many of those comments are associated with blatant attacks on my character, which,
blatant attacks on my character, which, you know, somehow insinuating that I'm not attending meetings in the council, that, you know, going ahead and living my life, you know, making me carefree and not to respect and somehow insulting the public or doing something unadored by not being in the council chambers. I have chosen not to respond to these comments before tonight, obviously, anyone who knows me knows that I get emotional very easily, and I did tonight, or I won't do that, and these attacks have happened, you know, again, like I said, in almost every council meeting in recent memory. In the past, I've let the attorney respond to it, he's multiple times reiterated, and I'm following all the council procedures by participating, participating in which is allowed, and the only comment I'm going to make in explanation, because I, I really don't feel that anything else is necessary, is that at all times, including not being present in council chambers, I follow the advice of my family's health professionals. I do that 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I've done that since we began and started, I will continue to do that, and I consult with them regularly about whether it is permissible for me to attend meetings in the council chambers in person, and they have advised me not to. And that is the only comment I hope I will ever have to make on this subject again, and I hope that this subject is closed.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. So, any other council members have any comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Good night, everyone.